We'll call to order the meeting of the Mint Hill Planning Board for July the 18th. We do have a quorum, so I'll ask Scott to do the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us and our town. We ask that you help us, guide us, to help us to make good decisions for the town. We also ask you to look over our first responders. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We're going to put off the approval of the men as they didn't make it into the packet, so we'll do that next month. We'll do April and July's at the same time. Any additions or deletions of any of the agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Good. Reports of committees, members, staff, anybody, anything? All right. No old business. New business. Discussion recommendation on the 2022 land use plan. You want to intro this thing, or how do you want to do this, John?
Yeah, well, what I'll do, I'll just introduce Ian. He's with our consultants, and he will go through, maybe just talk about how this started, all the meetings, kind of give you some background, and then present the plan to you, and then if you guys have questions, we'll attempt to answer.
Are we going to see the sub-area plans too?
Yes.
Because they didn't make it in the pack?
Yeah, that's in this presentation.
Okay, good.
There he is. All right. Thank you all very much for having me here. It's good to be here tonight and be at this point of the project. It's been a great process so far, and we're excited to show you our results. My name's Ian Anderson. I'm a landscape architect and planner with Merrick. We were the lead consultant along with Nealon Planning, Green Heron Planning, and VHB. So we thought we would just kind of, like John said, just run you through a quick summary of how we got to where we are today. So just a real quick overview of timeline. This was a three-phase project to get to the comp plan. The first phase was discovery. We started that in February of '21 on or about, and that was really just doing a lot of the stakeholder engagement, interviews, outreach, you know, really getting, collecting all of the data, past reports, and looking through all that, and starting to ask a lot of questions to the stakeholders and staff. Then we got into the plan development. Throughout this process, we were doing a pretty robust community engagement process that really utilized all the different tools in terms of workshops, in-person workshops, virtual meetings, online surveys, stakeholder outreach, you know, any which way we could reach out to the public, we did. And so that was through roughly June of '21 through January of this year, was kind of working on that comp plan, those sub-areas. And then we've been spending the last few months doing the plan documentation, so really putting the rubber hit the road, as they say, and developing that plan and toolbox for how we can implement these recommendations to the best ability. We don't, sometimes comp plans can be just that. It's a plan that sits on a shelf, and it's left to staff to try and figure out how to execute that, whereas we really wanted to provide a roadmap and break these big ideas down into manageable projects that you guys can work through to deliver this plan. So like I said, it was a really great community engagement process. You have a very engaged community. I'm pleased to say sometimes, you know, it's hard to get folks to show up, and that was not the case. Through our online engagement, as well as our in-person meetings, you know, we had over 415 people participate. They provided over 2,000 responses, so that could be a very detailed written response, or they could have just upvoted somebody else's idea. So I just, so you know, that's the nature of those responses. Lots of comments on the ideas that we were looking at, and what types of land uses, and what places are appropriate for Mint Hill, and almost 200 subscribers. So those are the people that wanted to get every bit of information, all the emails throughout the process. So these are good numbers, considering the size of the community. So that process kind of gave us five sort of community preferences, and then we developed planning responses for those. Those five were sense of community, you know, that was probably the number one thing that people said they loved about this town, or why they moved here, or why they stay here, is small-town feel. They like that, and they don't want that to go away. Coupled with that is, you know, we want things to do. We want entertainment. We want shopping and retail, you know, things to do with your family, with the kids. And so there is a balance there of maintaining that small-town feel, but also wanting to juice the entertainment a little bit and start to see some of that development. And so how would we, how do we balance those two things? You know, there's acknowledgement that Mint Hill's growing and changing. The demographic is changing. Growth is encroaching from mostly from the Charlotte Matthews side of town, and so how do we manage that? Part of that, the small-town feel that we heard a lot about was open space matters. The green rural character of Mint Hill is something that folks moved here for. It's why they're still here, and that's not something they want to see go away as a trade-off to get these things to do in the nightlife and the retail. So that starts to tell us that we have to be very distinct about where that development goes, and then act, kind of locating these things, these higher-density uses into activity centers, so that we can preserve all that green character and not let the sprawl and the drive-throughs kind of creep along our corridors. And then lastly was infrastructure to guide and support development. We know that, you know, water, particularly sewer, is a catalytic, kind of catalyst to development, and as soon as water and sewer capacity are there, you're going to see more development. And so how do we utilize that to implement our plan? And so this is where we got. This is where we landed. I think, you know, probably the biggest takeaway of what has changed from the previous comp plan to this comp plan is expanding on these, expanding our list of land uses, particularly under the residential category. As you'll know now, the comp plan currently just has one residential land use category across town. But as we know, as applications for development has come in and things have built out, not all of those fit that category, and some of these, you know, we went back and looked at all those, and looked specifically at lot sizes and densities, and tried to assign those correct, more land uses to reflect what's actually on the ground, what has been built out. So you will now see that we have four different residential designations, ranging from very rural residential to a mixed residential product like you'd see over at Brighton Park. So we want to allow for all that, but we want to be very specific about where those types of uses can go. And really, it became about concentrating those at activity centers. So, you know, like we said, you get to that land use plan, and the next step is how do you start biting these off into manageable projects? And so there's a few toolboxes, a few tools in the toolbox that we can use. Number one is development standards. So that's the UDO, right? That's going to have to come up behind this comp plan, and that's going to have to get dusted off and look at how those requirements, you know, support this plan. So that's just, you know, one of those development standard tools. There's public investments of, again, identifying areas of funding, or for instance, infrastructure, trying to drive water and sewer into those development areas that we know are, support our plan and are of interest to the development community. There's programs. These are not so much brick and mortar or funding strategies, but, you know, these are programs that the town can implement to start activating these areas, whether it's, you know, bringing the farmers' markets into downtown, or doing more programming in the parks, working with CATS to do transportation mobility studies, those kind of things. So figuring out what those programs are, and also then looking at follow-up plans and studies. As you will see in those recommendations, there are notes to say, hey, here's another area of study. Maybe it's looking at how our Parks and Rec facilities measure up against national averages, and where maybe we might be deficient, or where we're over, and what we could do to support that. So we come up with all these great recommendations, and then, you know, how you select them and what strategies you pick, it's really about alignment with, you know, town goals, with programs that you already have in place, or just, you know, generally, is this right for the town or not? And so we've worked with staff a lot on those recommendations to figure out what aligns best with town and will support the plan. The feasibility is that, you know, sometimes we have big ideas about what, you know, these follow-up plans could be, and we needed staff to help us kind of dial those in a little bit and say, yeah, you know, we've looked at that in the past, and we think this is the area that we need to focus on. So they kind of helped us vet those and make, get those more real, and what is feasible versus what maybe is maybe a little lofty at this point in time. And then what is the impact of those? You know, looking at what the potential, you know, impact of that particular program, of that particular funding, and, you know, kind of assuming what, you know, speculating a little bit as to what those impacts would be, potentially looking at how other communities have launched similar programs and what the results were there. So really kind of judging it by these three criteria to figure out what are the best strategies to implement the plan. And so you get this list of recommendations. This is just a sample of one of those from the Parks and Rec. And I should say, some, most of these have ideas in each toolbox. Some, maybe not. Some, maybe only two or three of those would apply to them. So it's not a one-size-fits-all kind of deal. But again, these were, all of these ideas were what we have been working on with staff to figure out what is right for Mint Hill, what is scalable, what is manageable for the size of the community, for the size of staff, for funding. And I think we've gotten, gotten a pretty good plan in here that will, you know, get us to the end goal as quickly as possible without getting bogged down in too much analysis or really big, heavy, long-term studies. It was really about how do we create these manageable projects that we can bite off as a staff and get this done in the next three to five years? So then we take all of those, and each one of those items becomes, you know, a strategy line item. And then what we do is we go back through that and say, okay, you know, here's the champion of it, the lead staff person, or maybe it's having to hire a consultant. For the most part, we have tried to implement strategies that can be accomplished with the staff you have on hand. We look at potential cost of what those could be, where the funding could come from, and sort of what some next steps would be. So this is really, starts to give you the roadmap for how to implement each one of these recommendations. And so what happens after the plan is adopted? Well, now we have a prioritized list of strategies, and we can just start at the top of each list. And so we go back and look and see what that recommendation requires, and how can we secure those resources? And what is the team? Is this a staff-led team? Is it, you know, something that we have to hire a consultant to do? Do we involve the community? Is there stakeholder groups? So what is that team to launch this initiative? And then, you know, we want to organize all of those projects, track those, and make sure that, you know, all of these steps are being followed, and that we have our point of contact that's leading that team and getting us to the end goal. So part of this comp plan, as we got into the details of the comp plan, it came that there was a couple of sub-areas that staff wanted us to take a closer look at. One of those was the downtown core area. Now, this is not the downtown overlay district. This is a boundary essentially that was determined, basically, it was what is left of the less-than-optimally-developed parcels. You can kind of see from all sides, it's being, it's being developed in here, but within this red boundary, this is land that is maybe not highest and best use. There are, one study that we did was look at, you know, the value of land, the structure value versus land value, to see what is undervalued in terms of what could be there. And so that led us to this sort of study area. And fortunately, you guys control a lot of land in that, within this boundary, and that puts you in a very good position, you know, to get a project like this off the ground, because land assembly is a big hurdle, and you're ahead of that. The idea here is that we want to create a, rebuild the downtown grid, downtown, using the roadway network.
Ian, this is the first time I saw it, because I sat in your presentation before. Make sure everybody's oriented to where we are here.
Yes, yes, sure. And I didn't have a laser printer here, but maybe I can.
You should be able to, I think. Can you see that as I move it?
Yeah.
Oh, can I do that right here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay, cool. So we're at Lawyer's Road and 51 right here. So the police station is about right where this parking lot is. I'm going to give you where, orient you. Here's Town Hall, where we are sitting right now. This water feature here is an expanded pond, this little puddle, the green puddle next door. We think that's actually a huge opportunity there, with the idea being that that water level is down low compared to the development around it, which means we could build a park around that, a downtown town park, expand that pond to be a district retention pond. Essentially, what we would like to do is, there is a burden on developers who would want to come in here, and that stormwater detention is, land is at a premium in an area like this, and they've got to detain stormwater somewhere. So typically, in urban environments, you would be doing underground detention in large pipes that are expensive. Developers don't like doing that. They'd rather just send the water to a pond that's in the back of the development. And so in urban areas now, we're seeing this, a trend where we're leaning more on the parks and open spaces to manage some of that stormwater. Essentially, those areas are sponges, and so they can take stormwater and then slowly release that, you know, per flood requirements. And what that does is, it takes that burden of stormwater off the developers, makes this a little bit more feasible from their standpoint, is that they don't have to, you know, take that onus of stormwater and all that structural underground work that they'd have to do. So that park is not just an amenity, but it's an infrastructure, multifunctional infrastructure is what we would call that. So that really becomes the heart of the downtown. We want to do as much inline storefront, mixed-use retail as we can around that. We do think there's a great opportunity to extend Town View Drive. It's stubbed off now. We think that's a new main street that could connect through to help complete the grid. And we also think that could push through all the way to the Historic Village. And so essentially, you would link Historic Village with this new downtown center with the park, and you, we've talked about different ideas, how you could work with the Historic Village to do historic walks, you know, maybe it's a walking back in time and learning the history of Mint Hill as you go back towards Historic Village. But then anchored on the other end of that, that you'll see right here, is a parking garage. And this is a key component of this downtown, because this is carrying a lot of the water in terms of parking. So parking's the tail that wags the dog. Developers like to see at least five spaces per thousand square feet, and so it's a lot of parking. And this is proposing to work either in combination with CATS, the private development community, but to build a parking garage that isn't just serving the retail, but it's actually would be a mobility hub. So that's the rub here, is this is not solely to support private development. This is to create a mobility hub in downtown Mint Hill that provides a range of options, you know, bringing bus in, micro-transit in terms of scooters, Uber platforms, all of this, where you can come, find where you need to go, using smart apps, and off you go. You park here, and you either stay downtown, or you can get on whatever means of transit and head to where you're going. But it turns the downtown into a hub, so it's serving both Mint Hill commuters as well as the private development community. Couple other items just to note is, we have, as I mentioned earlier, the police station's no longer here. We think they've got a premium real estate on that frontage. That's a really desirable area to be. So we've moved the police station to the back of the development, and we have also added a new community library. This is something that the CMS library has expressed some interest in. I've not been on those conversations, but apparently this is something that they have looked at Mint Hill for. And so you've got a, these public uses of library and police station, we don't think those need to be front and center at the premium real estate, so we put those to the back of the development against the greenway, and making that, giving people a reason to come back into the development, because that is really more destination-based, like a library. You're not just going to pull over on a whim to go there like you would perhaps to go grab a bite to eat or hit a store. So that's why those public uses are sitting back towards the greenway and to have some connectivity onto that trail system. The last thing I do want to point out is, you know, NC DOT doesn't like doing full signalized intersections within 700 to 800 feet of an intersection like this. So right back here, right before we hit this, the Gatsby development, we're right at about that distance. So we think this is an important intersection to focus on and start working with NC DOT on to make sure that we can do this, because if, without it, we start becoming a ride-in, ride-out downtown with the only real full movement coming in here. So we think we want, we definitely want to have this to connect through to Brighton Park and also into the new development. So that is right on that cusp. I think that is something that we can make a strong argument for why that should be a signalized intersection there. And then, you know, these, the roadways here are showing the future widened condition. And so that does creep up Lawyer's Road. It goes along the length of 51. And when that happens, the retail that is along Lawyer's Road here, it's going to eat halfway through their parking. So that, the configuration of those businesses now are going to be very challenged in a future widening condition. So we're looking at those as getting redeveloped and not remaining. So just wanted to point that out as well. I think for the most part, that's the big kind of takeaways from this, that we have been working on with staff and that we think, you know, would be attractive to the private development and community. I'm going to, any questions on this right now before I jump into the 218?
You've stayed, I guess it's on the north side of 51. The reason being?
You know, that's a good question. I think that was represented the most undeveloped, town-controlled land. There has a lot of encroaching development with the residential communities that are stubbing their roads into this. It felt, I think, that that was probably, you know, the most logical downtown core to connect that, all of these different surrounding developments. It's sort of, it's right here.
I think the road would be a handicap too, wouldn't it? 51 itself being on a four-lane highway?
Oh, absolutely. And getting all of the pedestrian improvements at those intersections is going to be key. And multi-use trails along in that corridor, these are the things we need to be fighting for. And then, of course, landscape, all of that. But you can't change the lane configuration as much as, you know, that could evolve, but I think you're going to be looking at something similar to this, so it's what else can we get with it that suits our needs? All right. So the other area that we looked at was the 218 interchange at 485. And I say that interchange, but really that goes all the way along 218 to, back to 51. And so part of the reason we are looking at this area is this would become sewered under the Goose Creek extension, sewer extension, that is currently being planned. So once that sewer line is extended up into the Veterans Park area, all of a sudden, there's a bigger basin that can drain to that. So that, that makes these properties a little more optimal for development. So if that's coming, what should this look like to support our plan? And so we know this, the interchange on the east side of the interchange is very underdeveloped, and developers really like interchange. This is high-volume highways and interstates. This is where you can see some very nice mixed-use development and potentially some office uses. So that's what we're showing here, is some exclusively retail, some vertically mixed, and a strong office component that would feed off of the retail, you know, for lunch hours and things like that. There is a lot of parking to accommodate that, and we've tried to internalize that parking and put all of that retail out on the street. And then, you know, transitioning to, you know, a residential product here, this could be one master developer or multiple. And so on the other side of the highway, we've got Veterans Park. The more we looked at Veterans Park, it just, it's such a great asset. It's, you know, the largest park, one of the largest parks in town. And it seemed like it was split between sort of the north half being active recreation, with the south half potentially being more passive recreation. We think there might be an opportunity to build a small trailhead that could be accessed from an existing road here that would take some of the demand of the parking off here. So this is where the trail biker guys go. This is where everybody's going to play sports and on the ball fields and in the courts. We think there could be a connection over the Goose Creek to that roadway and potentially transitioning to residential south of that. We know this is a very attractive development. It's opposite the park, and there is some interest there. So we're currently just showing that as a mixed residential, not getting too specific about the types of, or densities of housing that would happen there. But then more importantly, is coming along down 51, is this is a very, you know, this is a good retail corridor. It's high volume. It's between two, a highway and an interstate. There is some good development in there now. I think there's more sub-optimally development parcels there. And one of the things we noted is that the depth of those parcels and the way they are configured might provide an opportunity for a frontage road. So this would be a new road constructed here that would allow the parcels on the north to be that, you know, kind of auto-focused retail along the corridor. But then that could transition on the south side of that to a residential product, maybe something a little more dense than the single-family properties right behind it, something to transition from that, you know, corridor retail to the existing residential community. And then that new road could come in, and we, this corner, there's, I make sure I know what all of the, there's the gas station there, but it's a bit of a mess, but that is a high-profile corner. That's a really optimal corner that could support a pretty good amount of development. So we think that is pretty much a redevelopment of that property. That would be somebody coming in and getting the landowners together to do this, but we can bring that new road in. That could tie in. It wouldn't be a full-movement intersection to be right-in, right-out, but we would get rid of all of the curb cuts. It's a lot of access management issues around that corner when you have that many aprons and curb cuts on there. So we would identify just a couple points of access, again, internalize the parking so you get out of your car and then you go visit, you know, the shops around that, and all of those would be inline and, you know, zero lot depth on those highway frontages. So that, that's our 218 plan. It's really focusing along the 218, the length of that, from 51 to just east of 485, and how that could develop as this Goose Creek extension is realized, and what could be those uses that are going to give us the places to go, the things to do, you know, that's going to help with employment, help with tax base, you know, help pay for all the public facilities and amenities and things that we like. So any questions on the 218 plan? So any questions on the 218 plan?
Let's, let's start down at this end, just try to keep some semblance of order. Ken, you got any questions or comments about any part of the, the plan?
Not that we've gone over so far, no.
Yeah. Eric?
Yeah, nothing yet.
Roger?
Uh, one question on the 218. How have you allotted for the expansion or lack thereof of Highway 218 from 485 into 51? Because last I heard, that was kind of off the books with the state as far as improving that road any.
You know, that's, I have not seen any plans for expansion on that. So we, this does not assume an expanded road quarter like the downtown plan does.
Is this, is this why you're adding the road for access?
Yeah, you know, there's always nice to have parallel movement off a road like this. If you can get that, that traffic off there, but it was really about depth there that, you know, to get the retail in there, you don't need to go all the way back to where, to the back lots of those homes. And, and it's interesting, the parcels, a lot of them are split. So there's a north half and a south half. And we thought, well, if you put a new road in, you don't want to go blast right through some of these properties. You want to do it in between them because you probably get an easement there. And, and the way they're configured, it seemed like that could be a doable thing. It's not bifurcating whole assemblages of parcels. It's threading between them. And given the depth issue, we thought, and off the parallel movement, that might be a good move.
Okay. Next question. If you go back to the downtown area, the, the parking garage. I take it that's the woods that's behind the current police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so then from what I'm seeing, I take it this is parking in between these, the redevelopment of the town center corner there? Because when the roads expanded, you said that more than likely all of the current businesses, buildings would have to be reconfigured? So is that parking to the rear that will also be adjacent to the parking deck garage?
That's right. That's right. There's a lot of parking.
You're turning everything in towards the parking garage, in towards the town center park?
Correct.
Towards the town, huh? Well, what does that do for the square? I mean, how does that, what's the effect of that if you turn all this inward? What does it do to the square? I mean, you know, 51 and Lawyers there, which is kind of our, kind of our square.
Well, you know, you see this a lot, I think is that what will happen is this is where they're going to put their signage, right? This is where the, you do your nice elevations, awnings and signage. But the actual access point is coming off the parking lot because they know most of their patrons are going to come in from the parking lot versus from, from Lawyers or 51. But what we do is you'll notice there are pockets in between them and some of this is for service, but some would be for courtyards, that you could have shared patios out there to have the seating so that you're not, everybody's not tucked into the parking lot. We're giving them the access. But we also want people to see that the patios are full and there's diners out there. So that you do, as you're driving by, it doesn't look like a, you know, an elevation of, of businesses that don't have anybody in them.
Okay. And you're talking about expanding the road here, right out front, right out to the side here, all the way to the historical society? And that would be the new main street?
Correct. That'd be the extended Town View Drive.
Okay. That's all I have, Roger.
I want to switch back to the 218. The only question I've got really in that area is how are we set up now currently with the infrastructure we have in place versus what's going to be required? Sewer, water?
This is predicated on the Goose Creek extension happening. This, this type of development doesn't happen without a sewer connection. So this is assuming that's, that's a go. There is a, a map that shows the basin area. This, it's actually bigger than this and extends further to the south. And, and really comes down and touches, you know, the, the bridges, formerly the bridges. It all, it's almost that length of quarter from, from 51 all the way down and on either side of 485. So, so there is a significant basin that we know could be gravity fed. Then there's another boundary beyond that that could attach if it was pumped. So there's like the gravity boundary which this is in. Then there's a lift station boundary that could pump to that within reason. You know, you can pump as long as you care to pay, but this is like more what developers would realistically do. So I just want to point that out. This is just a small piece of a bigger basin that that would serve.
Yeah, that's kind of what I see too. All of what we're looking at is infrastructure is going to be a key to a lot of this.
That's right.
That we don't have right now.
Yep.
Yeah, going back to the downtown quarter. So how do we market this? I mean, how, how does this get taken out of? Is it going to be a team from staff or is it a team of, of, you know, community folks that are going to market this? You know, my thought is we don't have a lot of infrastructure here in Mint Hill at the time. You know, there's a few houses left, a couple of little strip shops. So everything's going to have to be built to, to, you know, create all of this that we're talking about. So what, what's that look like? How do we market this?
Yeah, that's a good, really good question. So, you know, I will say this, first and foremost, we're not done with our graphics on this. Is we wanted, you know, to take this plan to you guys and show you this. And we are going to be developing some 3D images of this that is photo real. So there's your marketing graphics. Number one, you got to inspire folks. You need to show them the plan and most people don't know how to read plans like this. And most people would look at a comp plan and not be able to see the potential there. So one is create the vision and, and that's what we're doing now. So, and, and those, that one little graphic can, can really grow some legs and make the rounds. So I think first and foremost, it's getting that, then it's advertising that to the community, letting them know what we have just done. Now, then it becomes the, the development community and there's different ways to skin this cat. Is that you could have the town fully master plan, which we're doing right now conceptually, but you could do design guidelines. You could set this up to where you are trying to find the developer that will come in and build the vision. You can also turn this, give this concept to a master developer and say, this is our idea. This is what we're thinking. You know, what's yours? And, and kind of relinquish that control to a master developer who would then potentially bring on other, an office guy, a residential guy, or do it all themselves. So I think, you know, it's rolling it out to the community and a lot of times these will get its own website. So having an own designated downtown Mint Hill 2030, you know, something like that, brand it. Give it a name, give it a website where people can go to. That's where you can send the developers who come sniffing around town and want to know what's going on here. Well, we can send them there now. But, but you, you almost, you need to brand it and, and make it that. And, and then I think it's how you procure the development, whether it is a block by block approach with you guys in the driver's seat or it's turning it over to a master developer and, and then you guys reviewing and improving or some hybrid version of that. But I think those are the steps. But I would say marketing it, let's, let's brand it. Let, you know, let's come up with the name and let's create the website and let's roll it out and, and get folks talking about it. And then I think there's more conversations with the town and the board about how that would get procured.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Couple of questions to end. You talked about the residential. You had like rural and low density, medium density and mixed. So define those for me.
Yeah. So that's a good question. Rural residential is what it is. These are over acre plus lots, very large lot. It's Cheval. It's the stuff in East Mint Hill. Low density residential is what is the old yellow on the old comp plan, which is essentially, you know, the half acre to an acre lot size. Then, you know, as we go up from there, we start looking at more of the product that you see in Brighton Park. So starting to get the smaller lot, town home products. So that would take you up to that medium density residential. Going from say 5,000 square feet up to the half acre lots would be that. And, and we have some descriptions and pictures in there. I might not be doing those justice. But then you get to attached and our mixed residential is what we're calling it. And that one, we wanted to not be as prescriptive on that one, to pigeonhole it into a certain density, but to allow it to be a developer to come to the table with whatever mix of product that they think the market could support, but it has to be mixed. It's not just one of either of those uses. It is, it is a Brighton Park, which we know did very well and sold well and, and has worked. So that, we, we originally had looked at potentially a higher, one more higher category of residential beyond that. That, but we thought that might open the door to multifamily, to apartments. We know that's not something that the community was very interested in. Yeah. So, so that was specific. And there was some verbiage terminology in mixed residential that could have cracked that door open. We took that out because frankly, if, if that type of products coming in, what we've heard is it needs to be integrated with a bigger development, a mixed use development. You're not going to come in and just build an apartment building. You're going, if you're going to do any kind of multifamily, it needs to be integrated with mixed use and retail, entertainment and, and an activity center, you know, along a corridor at an intersection, not flung in different parts of town that, that we decided shouldn't support that, that the community decided shouldn't support that. So that, that's how we got to that mixed residential category. It was through some wordsmithing and, and really trying to be wary of keeping that small town feel, that Earl character and not letting multifamily run rampant.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. So maybe this is a question for John. So as, assume this thing gets passed by the board, by us and the board. What happens with these guys? Is there a contract more with them already or not? Are they done? The plan is, the plan is their product, right?
That, that's, that's it.
Okay.
That, that was, so they're going to take us to this point to get the board to adopt it. Uh, once it's adopted, then that's where our work will begin. And, and what he was talking about earlier is, is taking this plan and then, you know, start discussing priorities. You know, where we want to go with it. You know, maybe there's a part of it, we really want to move on fast and maybe, maybe we change our mind 10 times. Like, you know, I don't know. So, but, but that, and it could be that we then bring them back on if it's something that we need more work on. But, but as far as this contract, it was to get this land use plan adopted.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I myself, this person, I think it's an exciting plan. I like it. I, I like the sub area plan. I like the 218 plan. My fear is that it's going to take some manpower to do all this stuff. And, you know, and so how do you, I mean, I know how this town is. They don't like to add, add people.
Well, um, does it take more manpower? I mean, possibly, but you know, we can always sub out work. But I, I think more important than the manpower is, um, we, we need this to generate some sort of excitement and to push us to do it marketing. Uh, now, once that's done, once, for example, if everyone jumps on board on this downtown plan, which I think, I noticed when he showed this plan to the committee and some of the others, that seemed to be when people start perking up a little bit. So I think that did generate some excitement. And so I think we just got to run with it. And, um, and, and if that happens, I, I'm, you know, confident we can do it. And the great thing about this downtown plan, I think he mentioned this, is, and this is where it could start. You know, we can really start moving on, is the, the town controls the vast majority of that land. And if the town moved fast on, and you know, we're doing that. We're relocating our public works facility. So you know, that's already being discussed. And, you know, so maybe that's, if we can just turn that switch, I think that's, that could possibly create kind of a domino effect.
So is there a play back? Now, the community gave a lot of input to this with meetings, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a play back to the community? Here's what we came up with?
Well, all along, of course, we've had these public meetings and then we are having a, what we're calling our second public hearing at the Board of Commissioners meeting next month. So there'll be another public hearing.
And that will be advertised how?
Yeah. And that's in addition to, that's the formal public hearing, but we've had public forums and online meetings and committees.
I'm just trying to get the public to, to get excited about this thing.
Yeah. Well, uh, it's, it's, it's a challenge. But like I said, I really think the difference here is that especially the downtown, is that the town, I mean, because they have the land. And, um, and it's, it's possible they could look at selling it and, you know, finding a developer to work with. And I also know that that critical piece that he was also talking about, the, the parking deck, those conversations have been going on for a while. So there already is momentum around that. Now, if we get that on the hook, that's, that's a, that's a big deal.
Yeah. Yeah. Good.
And, and I would offer up, you know, we have a great public engagement website that is up and running, that has the whole history of the process. You know, that thing's going to get archived, but it could, it could live on. You know, that, it's a subscribe, it, it, there's a, a group out of Raleigh called publicinput.com. They're nationally known. They're great, but they, they're kind of one of the best at hosting public engagement websites for how do you push something to the community? How do you propose something and get feedback? That's their whole MO is how do we do virtual engagement online? And they are, so Mecklenburg County is a huge client of them. They have a database that they carry on of subscribers. You do too, that 200 and some folks. You can get, they'll even push that out to some Mecklenburg County folks if, if they, if the county agrees to it. But you, you have something up and running now and I would say that you could keep that going for another year. I, I know they would love to keep, you know, being in your good graces. But it, it's something that people know now. It's, and it, and you can, at any point in time, you can put up a survey. You can put up a plan. You can say, give me some feedback. You can advertise the meetings. You can actually do online virtual meetings there that are connected to the cameras and audio here. It's pretty neat stuff, but, but it's there now. It's, it's been sort of frozen in time as we got to this final plan, but it could carry on. So I would, you know, offer that up as well.
Any other comments from anybody and more discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just kind of to build on what Tom was, was asking, now that the contract is up here, who's the baton being passed to? Who's going to be taking that leadership role from the town?
All of us?
Okay.
This is, this is going to be, um,
But somebody's got to be kind of spearheading, I would think.
This is, this is on the public. This is on the citizens. It's certainly on staff and, and, and the board members for sure. Um, because they're going to have to really drive this. I mean, that's how we operate here. They give us the mission. They tell us what to focus on. They say they want this and that's what we go after. So it's going to take that. And that obviously comes from engagement from their constituents. They need to be in the board member's ears saying, we need to put, you know, we need to do this. We need more greenways. We need to push. And then the board will drive that conversation and certainly direct us.
All right. Thank you.
This might be more for John. I noticed that in the, in the previous land use plan, there were five community centers. And this, this plan kind of addresses two of them. You know, there was Hoods Crossroads, there was Lawyers Ro, I mean, Lawyers Road and 485, 218 and 485, and then Dulans, Dulans Grove area over there. And so I was just curious, um, you know, with Lawyers Road having four million square feet of retail already approved. Hoods Crossroad, you know, is, you know, is already somewhat of a center over there. And I was just curious, was this directive from the town to just look at these two areas of community center? Or, or, you know, how was that addressed?
All right. Let me see if I'm following you. So to the two.
In the original, or, or the last plan, not the original, last plan, there were five community centers.
Oh, you're saying the one in 2010?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
Well, wasn't that the last one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it was, there were, there were, there were five of them. Downtown, Hoods Crossroads, Lawyers and 485 where the mall was going to be with the four million square feet, 218, and then Dulans because Dulans Grove area over there because of the amount of open space and what had already started there. So those were going to be the quasi, the areas that we, especially with the demographic going to empty nesters of 55 plus at that time. It showed, you know, what was it? Over 60% of our growth was going to be 55 plus age people. And those are the kind of community centers, centers that they would want to, this, this is two of them.
Yeah.
Is the town just because the town controls a lot of this property already? Is this the reason we're focusing on this, you know, not biting off more than we can chew here? Or what about the other three areas?
Well, just, so remember, so when we go through, when this is all set up, so that one in 2010, that was the. Well, just so remember, so when we go through, when this is all set up, so that one in 2010, that was the framework that was created. So that was, at that time, those consultants meeting with the stakeholders at that time, with the public input they had, with the committee that they, that was what they wanted to focus on. This is the framework they were provided. So this is, this is what they've been focusing on. Yeah, the other plan had a whole nother idea, they had the little nodes, if you remember.
That's what I'm talking about, that community center node, whatever.
Kind of existing areas and then they were taking them and saying, okay, let's add a lot more density and, you know, to create more momentum in those shopping centers. And that's just not the frame that was provided with this plan.
Okay, so basically this would, this would overwrite that 2010 plan?
Well, remember, that plan failed. So if.
Well, okay.
So if you remember, and that was partially the reason because of what you're speaking about, it had a lot of, well, they had a fatal error to call it high, high density.
Yeah.
And that's what sparked the big controversy and if you remember the board.
Yeah, oh, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, the town did not adopt that.
Been around too long, I do remember all that. But I think the, I think the downtown piece, I think is very exciting because, you know, this road is so busy. I get it, kind of turning it this way and keeping it back here where people can. We've always wanted to be able to move freely, to be able to walk, to be able to, you know, experience, you know, and tying it to our heritage, you know, with the historical society. I think that's all very strong and, you know, and I can, I can just envision a lot of things that you could do with the new Mint Hill Main Street area out here, you know, as that came along. And so I do like the parking because it's precious little of it now to do anything forward. We've had those conversations in the past about, you know, well, okay, what are you going to do when that does happen? You know, when the road gets expanded, what do we do, you know? And so, so I think that's all good. I like the 218, I think it's natural that that's where, you know, if we can get the sewer, that's where things would take place. I like the secondary road because the fire department being on 218 and needing access all the time. I like the secondary road for access. I think that's, I've seen that in other cities, other places, and I do think that's very viable. So I like what I see. I was just curious about how that other was addressed, but I see, I forgot a crucial piece there. It didn't pass. So we went through all that two years worth of work and it didn't go anywhere. So I get that, so, but, but no, I do like what I see. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
If you could go back to the downtown plan?
Yeah.
I was just, it seems to me it's very aggressive and requires a lot of traffic. And that's just beside the fact that it's going to create a lot of traffic to support that many businesses. I was wondering what, what kind of analysis did y'all do to identify that the demographics would even support this, this much business?
Yeah, that's a good question. And candidly, we didn't get into any kind of market study level, looking at, you know, what the demographic would support. This was the highest and best use of that land. We squeezed it, we, we put as much in there and it was really the balance of parking to get that. You're right, this is an aggressive plan, there's a lot in here. And so it could come down a little bit from this, but, but it works, it parks itself out. And I think it flows, you know, the, the traffic works, but you are right. It's going to add a lot of ADTs onto those roads to be sure, which is why we want to fight for those full signalized movement along Lawyers Road there as well. So is it an aggressive plan? You bet it is. It's looking at a, like I said, the highest and best use of this land and the garage is carrying a lot of that weight. If that garage became a surface parking lot, those little red boxes start coming off the map. And so it feels that way because there's two decks of parking in there with retail wrapped around it that, that I think, you know, gives that impression for sure. And I, did I answer that question?
Yeah, I was just, like I said, I'm thinking that's going to require a lot of people from surrounding areas to support this.
Oh, yes, you, you're talking about just.
Bring a lot?
Yeah, the whole rooftops leads to retail discussion. You know, that is a very good point about density in Mint Hill. And I do think there is a bit of a struggle some folks have is I really want entertainment, I want my downtown, I don't want density of residential. And sometimes the developers need that to come in. There is opportunity here, a lot of these have second and some even third floor uses. So when you, when you see the rendering, you'll see the vertical of it, but that's the other part is there could be condos above retail or office above retail. It's, you know, we're not obviously taking retail off the first floor because that doesn't work, but it is vertically mixed. And that does create the parking demand that we're seeing on there now. But, but market study wise, to say within this market service area, you can do this much square foot of retail, we didn't get that far into it. And I think we actually in our recommendations, we might've said, looking at some type of, you know, market study or as downtown comes around, looking at what, you know, what that could really support. But that wasn't part of the scope. This was more of a quick concept level of highest and best use study.
Kenny, it's kind of like this complex we're in right now. It was a great idea, but it took a while to fill out.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just thinking that's going to require a lot of residents to support this, to make it viable. And I don't know that we've got that many rural, low density community. I don't know that they're going to have to come from other communities.
You know, I, that, we might be siphoning from other retail areas with this, certainly. But I do think the frontage on these two roads is a huge, if this was, if you didn't have that frontage, I don't know that the plan would look like this, to be honest. But that volume and that visibility is working in our advantage as well. But you are very, you're connecting the dots between a lower density, what has been almost historically kind of bedroom community and trying to drop in a mixed use downtown, you got to have the density to support it. So I think things like Brighton Parker are making projects like this more viable. But I, I think there, I could almost guarantee that any developer, master developer or somebody coming in and trying to do a block or two would propose upstairs dwelling units above office, retail, something because they can make their money back that way pretty good. So I wouldn't be a bit surprised if this gets rolling, that you would see applications or ideas that have more multifamily above the first floor in downtown. And those were the ones that we'd have to scrutinize, you know, because what's the bigger project? And is the juice versus squeeze, that old adage, and making sure your guys are getting what you want and not just the developer.
Okay, Kenny. Eric, anything else?
Yeah, one more kind of general question. It might be more for John, but sort of both of you. I'm fairly new to land use plans, but are these ever supplemented with like forecasted numbers as far as, you know, like a fully realized plan? What could we see as far as population growth in Mint Hill, realized tax revenue into town, et cetera?
Not part of this plan, it's, the only way to get to that number, I think, is to look at projections and what census data is doing now, where it's headed. I think you could look at a particular development and estimate, you know, it would be fuzzy. I think it would be a little fuzzy and I think you really, you just have to base that off of projections more than an estimated demand. Because that demand, to confirm, you're talking about how many, if, if this development was realized, how many new dwelling units? How much square footage of retail is that?
Sure.
That, yes, we could give you that number. We, right now, we're calling it a lot of it mixed use, but we have all the square footages here. And I want to say it was about half a million total new square footage of retail, office, around 500K, I want to say of, and we're looking both, both sides of Lawyers Road here, the public uses, all of it, just raw square footage. But we didn't get too far into the weeds of, well, this much of that is retail and this is office. You know, it's, it's speculative a bit and looking at what something like this, you know, could typically support.
Got it. All I got.
All right, could I get a motion on a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to provide a motion, move a favorable recommendation on the land use plan, the 2022 land use plan forward as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Not a second? Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? So unanimous. Ian, you know, I'd say to you and John and to your whole crew, whoever was involved with this pack group, it's a good job. I was on the first one and it takes a lot of work to go through one of these things and the detail that y'all have here is good.
Thank you.
So you can pass that on to everybody, it's, it's well done, well done.
And I would say, what a great time to be the planning board in Mint Hill.
Yeah, really.
It's exciting, yeah. It's exciting, we just got to crack the whip over that one.
We could probably fit, what, eight or 10 more pizza places in there.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yes, we do a lot of pizza.
If nothing else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Scott, second?
Second.
Second by Roger. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure there's none opposed.
Aye.